Test, test.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here. We'll get this finance committee meeting going for our first quarter budget review. We have the auditor here. What we'll do is I'll turn it over to him here in a second and just kind of hit some of the high points. Obviously, everybody has a copy of this. If you have any questions, we'll come to council right after the auditor has an opportunity. Just a couple of points to keep in mind when you are looking through this, especially for some of the new members, the differences between what's encumbrance and the transactions that still accounts for the total percentage. So even if that money hasn't technically been spent, it is encumbered, but does count towards that total percentage if there's like an off number that puts a high percentage that you found in there. Doesn't necessarily mean that money's been spent just yet. If it is encumbered, uh, uh, what is it? Column. Thank you. That's the word for it. And then obviously a few things, you know, other things get paid at the beginning year, some things get paid at the end of the year. So that might be throwing off some balances too. But Mr. Auditor, if you want to go, hit the high points for us, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I've got a copy of the budget performance report. Mainly, it's the county general fund and street construction. Those are the two funds that primarily are the ones where we have the most concerns. The other funds in the city are solid and in pretty good shape. If you look at the first pages, there's the lovely estimates and they're pretty much in mine in what I had asked them earlier. If you look at page two, now we're sorry, the income tax collections, you can say it should be 25% of collections and that's just where we were at the end of March. And you can see that this time there was no labor revenues. Those revenues are, that's exactly what I thought they would be. They did not have mobile and they're just about where we believe they would be. And that's the lifeblood of the city right now. It's everything being equal. The income tax is what we rely on to make pay everyday expenses salaries and otherwise in the general fund. You go to page three, we'll sit down and tell you. Lower part is just as the various taxes we receive, the state income tax, local government fund, that's where the state pays us back on the local government fund. Now, they did cut it for the first time about 10 years ago for the first time in history. They actually cut the local government fund, which was an unforgiving deal. But we've been able to live with that. You can see that our total motel tax has increased and I think that's due to the houses being used or whatever. I don't know what I said, but I don't know.
Short-term rentals, yes. Short-term rentals.
Yes, short-term rentals, yes. So you see the real property community, that was a real estate taxes and that decreased substantially to the approach. And so that was a good thing for us. We've gone, so that's what you can see is pretty just basic. I'll shake you to page six. There's our government department and now the revenues have looked much better because I've got the rental property licenses in advance both so at the beginning of the year than we do at the end. And we go to, by the way, the courts, I gotta talk to Mr. Kelo or the judges, but I believe that some people driving around on page two, that was second from the top, parking fines and other fines you can see are really down because I think people are getting the message that you better drive 30 times in those areas or you won't get a ticket. Now, that does, when there's less tickets, there's less money that comes into the coffers of the city. So if you have any questions, open them. That is the amount of money that we received for revenue. And that is to page seven so far. We've taken in $11,559,156 in the general fund. The expenditures have been pretty, we look through them, this is most of our expenditures for salaries and otherwise are at the proper percentage that we anticipated in when we did the budget. So there's nothing that's out of line. And so if you look at page seven, on the budget performance, you can see that when you look at, kind of this more associated revenue, it tells us expense told about three quarters of the way down the page. And if you look at the eighteenth transactions through March, you'll see that we've taken in eleven, like I said, eleven point five million dollars. In the general fund, we spent about 10 and a half million. It shows revenues over by a million, but that skewed a little bit because the property tax that came in at a low rate was for six months. So you extrapolate that and divide that three hundred thousand a month, it's about even. So that's very bad in the general fund. If anybody has any questions, I'd be delighted to answer.
Thank you, sir, for that. Certainly appreciate it. Did you have a light there? I just wanted to mention one of the things today I did notice, just if anybody else had seen that, some of the contractual services seem like they're being spent. That is also just because they are encumbered, not technically spent yet. And I know a lot, quite a few of the funds.
That is, that's my fault, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, you're right. Because there are people had 1.5 million encumbrances, which means we had obligations notified over. But that's over time. Those are the items that are going to come in through the year. So that doesn't concern me as much right now, but that is true.
Thank you, sir. I do have a light. Counselperson Thornzberg.
Thank you. Through the chair to the auditor. Question related to health, hospitalization. How do we look at hospitalization? And is there anywhere in here where I can see just hospitalization put together? It's always broken out by department.
No, that's in the, that's in a separate fund. So when you see hospitalization here, that's the money that we're putting into the trust. I upped the rates for single family plus one, person plus one, person plus two last year. And we were, I noticed when I took over as auditor that we were, and I said when I was concerned that we'd have enough money to pay. And so we, right now, I got about $700,000 in the trust fund. So we're, I'll send you a report if you'd like. We are in very good shape. Don't forget, we pay out of that besides for hospitalization costs, half a million dollar bond way back in the support. They had problems and they actually borrowed a lot of money to pay the hospitalization debts. And that is finished this year. That'll be done.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Any, Mr. Arndt, Counsel President, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, sir. Excuse me. Well, let's get to half the good news. I know the mayor at our last meeting, he signed it briefly, that we would be discussing this in our meeting today about our finances being relatively in good order, which is great news. Question to you, Mr. Kuzner. They just recently passed the state budget down in Columbus. Does that can affect us anywhere this year or till next year?
Mr. Chairman, I'm like, the budget that they passed, how is it affecting the local government? I haven't seen anything other than money to do with schools. I don't have any information that there's been any changes of a little bit. My city doesn't concern that. I say it's schools and libraries. But I will consider that we not, I said this before, that we will, we will finish 2025 in the black. That does not mean that we're in the best of shape going into the future. We're still going to be taking in less revenue than the cost sets to operate this city. And that's a fact. And that's not going to change unless there's additional revenues coming in or some other presenting in. I will so maintain that is a fact.
Yes, please.
Well, thank you for those comments. I know we're very fortunate, the fact that you've been a past state rep, so you kind of have the inside knowledge down in Columbus, financial and the committees that you sent. So thank you for your comments.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Don't see any other questions from council at this time. We can, if the administration wants to say something, they can. If not, we'll go straight to the public. I apologize. Mr. Auditor, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, and the federal council, we do have the note coming through for 6/11 that we, 6/11 we did right through the city last year. And that note's going to come through. We also have some projects that the mayor and his engineering department has proposed. So I met today with barn council and our underwriters, and I am contemplating going to barns around June, July of this year. They're going to depend on what the interest rates are because, you know, it's not the best of times in Washington, so what interest rates we're going to have. And so I do model the, this year's AWC, I share 614,000. Next year's proposed AWC, power bill bond is in the works, has been in the works. And I hope the show is going to be about a million four. And I showed the calendar notes that I'm going to enable enough I can some money. And that'll set up funds to pay those projects. But also once again, every time this happens in the future, you also have to pay the bonds later. So it's not free, but it'll be able to stream behind it and find it properly.
Thank you for that update. We will go to anybody in the audience. If you have a comment, please step up to the microphone. If not, we'll move on back to council or the administration for some final thoughts or questions. If anybody has any. Nope, I see it. All right, perfect. Yeah, so far it looks like it's on track. Glad we had the meeting and we'll continue to have, you know, three more at least, just to track as the year goes. So any questions in the meantime, obviously, reach out to the auditor or myself and I'll just forward you right to the auditor. But let's end the finance committee and then we'll start the buildings and lands. Do I have to actually gavel? Oh, for the presentation. Okay. We might take a few minute break or wait for our presentation to show. Yes, Mr. Thornzberg, counselperson Thornzberg.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's what I was going to say. I don't see Kate or Mr. Conley in the audience yet. If we wanted to go out of order and do item C before we do items A and B, that, I don't know if those officials are here or not. They're here?
Yep.
I was certainly entertaining that. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, sir. I think we will do that. We'll just switch right over to our buildings and lands and we will go C, A, and then B. And hopefully they show up because we were going to go quick, quick on the finances. So, okay. Mr. Kuzner, do you want to come on up? Switch over here. Do I have to gavel or do you start? All right. We will just move right into our buildings and lands subcommittee discussion regarding the proposed ordinance 186-21, chapter 1515 of the codified ordinance is registration of vacant commercial buildings. What we'll do is we will start off with Mr. Kuzner, kind of giving us the brief changes. I believe it's increase in some fees, a bond, some other things. So if you would, kind of hit it, hit the changes for us and then we'll go to council, sir. Thank you.
There we go. Good evening, everybody. Matt Kuzner, BHP director for the city of Lorraine. Before you today, and what we're hoping to get out of committee and ultimately approved by city council, are changes to the vacant commercial property registration. Back in 2021, city council did pass a vacant commercial property registration code. But what we aim to do is to modify it, to add more, to add additional teeth in it, and to also add a couple of different provisions that we believe will help with enforcement and compliance. So firstly, we, in these changes to the city ordinance, we are adding the requirement that vacant commercial property owners add the city of Lorraine as additional insured on their, on their property insurance. This will ensure that the city has an idea of what properties are insured and which properties aren't insured, but also will be notified anytime an insurance policy lapses, when it's renewed, and really any changes to the policy. So for instance, if, if somebody files for the registration, they have property insurance and they forget to pay the bill, the city of Lorraine will be notified. We can reach out to that commercial property owner and hold them, you know, and hold them in compliance to make sure that those properties are maintained property insurance. Next, the registration fee will increase from $400 to $1,000. We have seen that that is a very consistent fee with, with other communities, with neighboring communities. In fact, many other communities have a very large escalator, which we are also proposing that the annual, that the annual registration fee will increase by $500 each year the building remains vacant. Again, that is smaller than other communities. So we're trying to be proportionate, but still, again, make sure that the fee is commensurate with, with what the city has to deal with, with what city staff has to deal with, and also making sure that people are compliant. Lastly, the changes to the ordinance will add a bonding requirement, a cash bond requirement that the city can use to abate any public nuisances on these properties. So this is very similar to, to another ordinance that the city has on the books in the residential foreclosure ordinance. What we will require is upon registering with the city, either a $10,000 or a $15,000 cash bond, depending on the size of the building, be filed with the city. If you look in the language of the ordinance, that will cover, that will cover anything such as repairs, barricading, fencing off the property. Again, to make sure that that is not something that the city taxpayers, a cost that the city taxpayers have to incur, but to make sure that we have some funds available that aren't necessarily ours, to ensure that these properties are free of code violations and secured. Upon the sale of the property or upon the property being occupied, some of those fees will be refunded to the property owner. So the balance of the bond can be refunded to the property owner as well as the fee as long as the property is occupied and is being used for a permitted use in our zoning code within a year's time. We felt that this was necessary for at least two specific corridors, but could be applied and will be applied throughout the entire city. Broadway is a, downtown district on Broadway is a district that desperately needs, that we need tools so we can enforce, so we can enforce the code and hold, and hold property owners accountable. East 28th Street between, between the tracks and Grove Avenue has seen disinvestment, has seen complacency from property owners. And without additional penalties, without additional fees, without additional compliance measures, it's difficult to hold those individuals accountable. And if they, and if, you know, they refuse, we now have, we now have tools at our disposal to make sure that these buildings are brought up to an appropriate standard. We, we are very thankful that city council voted to approve the criminal penalties in the zoning code because the next logical argument is, well, people are using them as self-storage facilities. Isn't that a permitted use? If they file vacant commercial property registration, can't they just use them as storage? And the answer is no, according to our zoning code. So now that the zoning code violations are criminal penalties, we can take them to housing court and make that essentially compel them to change the use to a permitted use and actually bring, you know, bring jobs and, and actually reuse these properties for their intended use. We really want to go after properties in those two quarters, but also properties like Check, like Check Grill, who, an individual who purchased the property, complied with the bare minimum, put a couple of windows in, and we haven't heard anything in a very long time. However, if we would have had the bond, we would have been able to secure the property. We would be able to secure the property. We would be able to make improvements to the property, whether they like it or not. And hopefully that would be enough to urge these property owners, you know, to essentially do this themselves. We shouldn't be in the business of doing this for them. So we need these tools at our disposal and we need additional tools to compel them to essentially do the right thing. So it's very, a little bit longer than brief, but.
That's fine. Perfect. Quick, quick question. As, as you started with the insurance, and maybe I missed it in here. If they do lapse on their insurance and the city is informed, is the city, is there a trigger in here that allows the city to then compel them to get back up to date with their insurance? I didn't see that.
So I mean, effectively, the vacant, the registration would become invalid. So then we would, you know, we would enforce the lack of having a registration, go to housing court and proceed, proceed down those steps.
Understood. Thank you. And then with the increase of 400 to 1,000, and then 500 per year, before there was a limit, is there a limit on that increase now? Because I didn't see that either.
I do not believe, I do not believe that we put a limit.
Yeah, I didn't, I did not see that. Okay.
We did not.
Okay. And then a more of a, like a, I don't know, back office kind of question. Are the, are there, our inspectors already have quite a few things to do. How are you going to be able to manage, not an additional thing because they're kind of already doing this, but it's another heavy lift on the, you know, inspector's shoulders. What are we looking at for that? So that you be able to actually do this properly, let's say?
Sure. So in preparation of getting this ordinance down to council, we did a couple property sweeps, one on Brock Lane, one on East 28th Street.
Makes sense.
So we have, we have letters ready to go. We have the enforcement steps all ready, ready to go. But we didn't want to send anything out under the old ordinance when we knew that this was going to be up for consideration and have a lot more requirements that, that property owners would have to comply with.
Okay. Okay. So currently, the inspectors can handle this. That's an issue?
Correct.
Okay. One more question.
And this will also provide additional, an additional source of revenue for the department.
With the increases.
Correct. Sure.
Question then for, and I apologize, I wrote in my notes, but not specifically where it was here, is affecting compliance. It says that the city can either charge 150 an hour or a minimum of 250, or you can go to an outside contractor for those repairs and that's plus like 15% for administration fees or whatever. I'm curious, how often is it that the city actually sends a city worker to make those repairs versus how often would that actually be outsourced to a general contractor?
Sure. So ultimately depends on what it is. If we're picking up trash off of the tree lawn, that's something our public properties department does all the time. But instead of placing a lien on the property, we would essentially take it from that bond. It'd be essentially paid back immediately as opposed to filing the lien. But ultimately, it depends on what kind of mitigation is needed.
Understood. Okay. And I think that, I do have some lights. I apologize. We'll go to that. But then, real quick, in the tracks changes, there's not a page number, but it's item V. It is for the anti-registration fee. It does say $1,000, but the print is actually wrong. It's like 1,000,000. Just a little error that will have to get changed. And it's not a big deal. I just noticed that, that thing. So we have some lights. I apologize. I did not see who was first. I'll just go left or right. Counselwoman at large, Brinkowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through the chair to Mr. Kuzner and Mr. Fassiana. Hi, Dave. We often have these buildings that, you're right, store funds that they're being used quote unquote for storage. One in reference would be like the McConne building. It says it's a storefront for an online Etsy store. It is never open. And I mean, it's just sitting there. It's a lovely building. It could be put to good use. It's right in the center of Broadway there that, you know, how are we going to address those things?
Sure. So that's where, that's where the criminal penalties of the zoning code can come in. So if, if that is, and the only time that self-storage facilities are even allowed in the city are in I-1 districts as a conditional use. So it's very, very limited to where people can actually have self-storage. We would, we now can actually prosecute those through our housing court and hold them accountable that way. But also when, you know, if this passes, we would have them comply with this ordinance as well. But we would immediately send a cease and desist under the zoning code and send a notice of violation for this vacant commercial registration code.
Do you think, through the chair again, do you think that the penalties are sufficient to, that it's not just a write-off or a cost of doing business for them? Do you think that these penalties will be sufficient in order to encourage turnaround of these buildings?
Through the chair, I believe so. Having the bond requirement is, is pretty significant. There are, the only bond requirement we have right now in the city overall through legislation is for residential properties, and those have to be paid by banks. But these would have to be paid by individual property owners in cash to the city upon filing. So I think that will make, I think that will make people wake up to realize that the city is serious, more serious than we happen, and, and hold them accountable.
It might help in turning these around and maybe then partnering with the RE/MAX or with the port in order to get businesses. Because I know that there have been a lot of people that have reached out, but there haven't been any properties quote unquote available. They're not being used, but they're not available. So, thank you. I look forward to seeing what happens with this and the enforcement. And I do hope that we do have enforcement on this. This has been a long time coming.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next, councilwoman Henley.
Thank you. And through the chair, I really like this. It's about time we put some teeth into this stuff. But I would also, down the road, just think about it. A lot of these people that have these commercial buildings also have a lot of residential properties that are sitting vacant and used to storage also. Now, since I keep following these ones, they've been around for six, seven, eight, 10 years. It would be nice to do something of the same sort with residential eventually. I mean, you guys got to get through this. But it's the same property owners a lot of times. So, and so many other cities, as, as you mentioned, they do this. They require the bonds and the additional insured naming, you know, the city as additional insured. So I think it's a good idea and I like this. Thank you very much for all the time and energy you put in on this.
Thank you, Councilwoman Henley. Do you have comments, sir?
Yes, thank you. And if there, and thank you, Councilwoman Henley. And if there are properties that you or any other council member or any member of the public knows of, please call us, email us, shoot us a text message. Now that we, you know, Kate, keep hanging on the zoning code, the tools or the zoning code. But now that we have that additional tool though, that, that is something that we can actually, that's something that we can do now. So if there are properties, addresses, you know, please let us know. Of course.
Thank you very much. Next, lady, councilwoman.
Thank you, Chair. I want to thank you for this also. It's a check bar, check bar on 28th Street. From 28th Street to 29th Street, they don't get, they never get dumpsters. So what it is, is if you go back there, there's trash all back there from where they're remodeling and everything. But I will send another email. But what I find out when people are doing this commercial work and all this, they never get dumpsters. They just throw stuff in the backyard or they try to put it out for the trash and I'm in a, picking up trash cans and boxes and stuff. So how do I handle that? I have someone down the street from me that's remodeling their home and every day. They're picking up the trash, but they put it out just so early. It's blowing over. So do we send them a letter or how do we handle that? Thank you.
Through the chair, you can, you can definitely send them to us. And if it's something that our public properties department, depending on where the trash is, if that's something our public properties department can pick up, they'll do so and they'll leave the property. But if it's something that we need to, that we need to enforce through our means or with the health department, that's something that we can do also. But if you let us know when you see it, we can go out there, do an inspection and then get it to the right people.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And one more light here. Councilman Herroy, please.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, to Mr. Kuzner, some of these properties, especially a lot of them on 28th Street, some of them are already in court. So would we be able to enforce this new law on them or would they be, they're grandfathered in just because they're already in court?
Through, through the chair to Councilman Herroy, they would not be grandfathered in. We would, if they do not comply with this new registration requirement, we would send a notice as a violation. New laws passed that they have to comply with. That's something we can send, send them to court over.
Okay, thank you. And then I truly appreciate this. I mean, we had a property, my first time had, I think, 32 Ken Corso's in the building. king corsos in the building, uh, where they were dog out, dog breeding, yeah, and to the point where the, where the smell was terrible and we had the old hills, I mean, this is obviously tons of them on Twenty-Eighth Street, but I guess more of this question comes to some of these properties that are on Broadway such as bootleggers, um, right, that's, doesn't have a liquor license, um, has an owner, but do we count that as vacant? Uh, I mean, I'm not going to say the rumors that people say what's going on in some of these different properties, but there's unsolved homicide at that property, so, um, or close to that property with that name put to it, where the city's taken the liquor license once in the past already. How do we go after some of these properties where we, we count them as vacant, but they're still having activities going on in those properties?
Um, sure, through the chair to Councilman Arroyo, uh, we have a few different tools, um, and we're actually working on, working on a few different, um, a few different properties right now, um, a lot of collaboration with the law department, fire department, police department, health department. Um, when we identify those properties, it's really a, an all hands on deck situation, um, and we, we address those as we can. Um, not sure how much I can say about the, the one particular property that you raised, but that is something we're looking into.
I just put that out as an example because of just recent history and what's going on in our city right now over the last few weeks, so that's why I use that one as an example, and my last question is, God rest his soul, John Viard, he owns a lot of properties on Broadway, um, and right now I guess, as a family deals with what's going on with this, you know, with the business. How do we, uh, enforce some of those vacant properties on Broadway that, uh, he owns?
Sure, so through the chair to Councilman Arroyo, um, these, so this registration requirement provides a, not necessarily a grace period, but it does provide an avenue for registrants to receive that, the bond money back and the registration fee back as long as they get the property up to code and occupied within a certain amount of time. I believe that the timeline that we indicated in here was one year, so for, for properties that are vacant, property owners will have one year. Um, and they will be able to get their, their funds back as long as we haven't used any of them.
Now, say their situation, I'm just using them just as an example because they own a lot of properties. They're in court for years to decide on what's going on with their property, is that stay on hold because their family's in court? And I don't know if they are or not, I'm just using that as an example, um, would, would we still be on hold just because they're dealing with their issues? Or any other type of landlord, if they were in the same similar situation?
Um, that's, that's a really good question, um, I may have to get back to on that. Um, I suppose what I could say though is that, um, we would file the case and if we find out information that, um, if there's, if there's, you know, problems with with the properties being transferred to or if it's, you know, in limbo through, you know, if you're in a state or whatever the case may be, um, we'll deal with those things as we come up, but, um, well, we, you know, start the process and if we find out those things along the way, then we'll adjust accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate that, Councilwoman Alaric of all.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, Mr. Chairperson. I'm, I missed something, how do I know a property is vacant? Now, I know you gave the characteristics of it, there hasn't been any business there, but how do I know that? How, how are you going to know a property is vacant unless you have owners that come and tell you it's vacant? How, how do you identify?
Uh, through the chair, there are some tell, telltale signs, um, for instance, when I, I was walking down Broadway the other day, walked across or walked past a couple of buildings and mail was overflowing out of the mailbox. That's a clear indication that nobody's living there, if nobody's picking up the mail. Um, we have the ability to look at water bills, to look at consumption, so if there are zero units of water being used, that's another clear, it's another clear sign that the property's vacant. Um, if property isn't paid the property tax, it's another one, so we have a few things that we look at to see if the property's vacant, if it's uncapped.
So do you have someone dedicated to doing that in your office?
Uh, not necessarily dedicated to that particular function, um, we look at code enforcement, you know, very broadly, property maintenance violations, but vacancy is part of the calculus, right, so we look for different code violations. If the inspectors notice that mail is overflowing out of the mailbox, then we'll also cite for, for the property being, is, the property being vacant.
So these inspectors are your housing inspectors that you're talking about?
Yes, our housing inspectors as well as our, our building electrical and plumbing inspectors.
Okay.
When they're not doing their electrical, building and plumbing inspections.
Okay, I just wondered how you were going to, to spot these buildings without the owner coming and saying, hey, it's vacant, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, I think one, a point, some of this might actually obviously be complaint driven by residents and whatnot for that, uh, council president, Karen Dunne.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, through the chair, just a little history here. So in twenty, October of twenty, of twenty-one, legislation became before council, we had been talking about this for a number of years. But we signed the ordinance back then, improving this vacant buildings and other, uh, code enforcement. Part of it was because we finally had staff who was able to do this. The people at that time, who are now still here on council, Mr. Demakia, Ms. Brungowski, Ms. Henley, Ms. Carter, Ms. Moon, Mr. Carey, who is now our safety service director, and Mr. Thornsberry. It was a ten to one, ten to zero vote, we had one person not in attendance that night. So councils have been asking for this for many years and the probably two of the most vocal ones were Ms. Brungowski and I know Mr. Thornsberry. And we finally had enough staff that Mayor Bradley was able to dedicate it to have a staff. So part of that was there. So if you look at the new legislation that's coming down, it's italicized, the changes that we're doing. They talked about this thousand dollar fee, but the fact of the matter was, back in this legislation, it stays specifically that we could go up to a thousand dollars in the fine. Also, if you read it over and it's italicized, and it would be great, I'm going to ask council clerk to possibly get this highlighted and our chair, Mr. Nutt, the differences in this upgraded legislation that Mr. Kuzner is also talking about. One thing is the key box, which is now the knock box. Also, a minimum of two triple candles of lighting should be required, exterior lighting fixtures, that's an addendum to the original legislation. A covering shall be placed on all doors, windows which are within fifteen feet of the exterior grain consisting of one half inch thick clear polycarbonate attached to framing on all set stars, windows with screws, minimum length of one, one and a half inches. Places twelve inches on center, in order to consider secure property must follow being compliant with all requirements, property maintenance code, City of Lorain, Ohio, or form of display shall be set approved by the chief building official designate. A cost of the anti-registration shall not exceed twelve hundred dollars for a given year. So the fact of the matter was, the original legislation, we did have up to a thousand dollars. Also, it says that applications shall be received by the building department within thirty days of the expiration of the preceding registration. Applications received after thirty days shall be considered late, subject to penalties provided year end. Applicants shall furnish keys for the pre-key box at the time of application. So the point being is that it's great that we're updating it, but some of these conditions were already there, but I'd like to applaud Mr. Fasana here, he right now has a staff of four individuals, you could, I'm, I'm going to I'm going to ask you to elaborate on this, but the process that I was told and council members are bringing up, which is great. Cause what I would do, I would call Laurie Garcia, a public property, you know, there's, especially on Twenty-Eighth Alley by Mexican neutral buildings, there is always trash. So she told me, I have to call the building department to get a citation, they issue a citation, then it goes through the process, a notification, then if they don't notify it, then that's when they could come and get rid of the trash or whatever they do, and like I said, that's what I was told. So there's the paper trail, I think I told council many times, I'm out there, I take pictures, I send it to Mr. Orocho who also has Mr. Barrios, I believe, is supposed to be in charge of the alleys, I'll let Dave expound on that, but the fact of the matter is we do have a process and this saying, would I would also write requests to our chairman and also to Mr. Nutt and Mr. Kuzner that we get something in writing, so when we have new council people, even council people who've been here for a while, all they have to do is go down to the council clerk, we have this form which has to be done. We have elections this year, good chance we're going to have some new council people next year, they're going to go through the same process again. What do I do? So it's very easy, go to council clerk, choose the form, choose what has to be done. Sure, you can call the departments, but I think it was streamlined and makes it a little easier for everybody to know what we can and we can't do. I know I reported since August sixth, when we had that storm, there's still properties in Lorain that have branches or trees on the lawn, I know some have been removed, some have not. So those things would make it easier for council here also, because when we get, uh, people in the neighborhood, they call you up. Hey, you know, are you, this is my neighborhood, they called the council person, how do you get this done, okay? And all they want is an answer, so sometimes we don't have it, but this way we could share it with them. So whenever Mr. Fasana is ready, I would request that he could enlighten us a little bit too.
About the inspections.
About how the department works also.
Thank you.
All right.
So as far as the procedure goes, two things, um, if public properties is going to clean up the property, it must be within the right of way. Public properties will not cross the right of way, they will not clean up someone's backyard, front yard, side yard. That is for our department to, um, send out notices to that property owner, if they don't clean it up, then at that point, there's the clean and lean, uh, program. We were doing the clean and lean, we are now relying on the county, uh, to do the clean and lean, they come into the City of Lorain twice a month and we have a list of properties that they work, that we work with, with them, and they have, um, low, um, what do I have, the word that, uh, they're, they're court, court offenders, that it may have a small fine or a sentence that they can work out with the judge that allows them to do this program. And on average, we have anywhere from five to eight, uh, participants twice a month that clean, that clean these properties. Um, as far as the, uh, going back to the, to the, to the right of way, if there is a property that has trash on it, call our department, the inspectors will go out there, they'll post a seventy-two hour notice and then that, from there, we will, we let public properties know and then by, on that Saturday, as long as we get it into public properties by Wednesday, end of day Wednesday, that Saturday it'll be picked up by public properties, as long as there isn't an emergency or snow removal, obviously that's going to take precedent over the cleanup. Uh, but any, any other issues you have within the properties, I know most of you guys email me, you email Mr. Orocho, just email us and we'll address it. The other, uh, great tool that you guys can use and really the residents is that See Click Fix. It's that app that we have that you can go on there and report any issues that you have. I have, I have a staff that manages that every day, he is on See Click Fix every day, responds back to it, he addresses those issues. Um, and I think we have a good rapport as far as closing out the See Click Fix, uh, uh, incidents that come through.
Perfect, thank you, sir, appreciate that, uh, Mr. Mayor.
This doesn't have to do with vacant properties, but just want council to know that this past weekend, uh, we've been getting a lot of complaints about the alley off of Fourth Street, off of Broadway. And so Lorain County Public Health came in with their workers and they loaded up a complete trailer with all the junk that was in that alley on, um, on Fourth Street, so they are very helpful to our building department in getting some of these things cleaned up. I also have to give a shout out to Ray Careyon and his friends of South Lorain, they cleaned the underpass on Twenty-Eighth Street um, completely, Angel, you were over there for a while, and, um, they also went over to, my pet peeve has been that vacant car wash on Lover Road, uh, so Laurie Garcia sent a crew out there, um, last week, picked up some of the, um, garbage and trash that was there and then Ray took the friends of South Lorain over there and cleaned up that property. So, um, we have people that are trying to address some of these issues, sometimes it takes some time, you have to notify the railroad and tell them, well, if you don't do something, we're going to take care of it, but, uh, uh, we're trying to, we're trying to do the best we can to clean up our city.
Appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, uh, back to our chief building official.
Thank you, uh, also just wanted to add, please be patient when you guys send emails to us, um, they do jump on these right. I do have three housing inspectors that are dedicated to full time, Matt did say that we have the building inspectors. Most of them, those guys are busy doing the inspections for the new construction addition, stuff like that. So please be patient when, when you guys do send it to us, they are, they will go in a rotation. Just to let you know, last year alone, the housing inspectors, I want to say did almost five thousand complaints. Um, for three guys, that's a lot of, a lot of work. On top of the demos that we do, the clean and leans and all the other programs that our department does, so again, be patient.
Thank you for that, so I did have a light, I did want to ask a quick question based on something to Mr. Kuzner, uh, about the cash bond. Uh, I'm assuming obviously, uh, that that's not per address a building, that's per physical building, if the building happens to be split with two commercial storefronts or something, just you, something along those lines, that is still considered one building, not two, because of the addresses?
Correct, correct.
Okay, um, the only issue I kind of have with this is the cash bond section of it. The only reason I say that, because there are plenty of buildings that absolutely need to be taken care of and I completely understand the city having that is very impactful, I would say, but there's also some lower dollar value buildings out there that can be turned and fixed, but that maybe that ten or fifteen thousand dollars, that's a huge hurdle for some of those investors that, that, so I mean, maybe we can chat about it afterwards and get a little more information. Uh, but I, I do actually like quite a bit of this in here, but that's the one thing that kind of, we can chat about afterwards, because to me, I see that just as another barrier um, to some potential investors that do want to come in and do want to fix up buildings, I mean, I, I think quite a few people know I, I, I try to do what I can, I done a few on the demo list, because you know, you see the huge impact that that makes, that other people won't touch those buildings, I just see this as, just, and, and like I said, I completely understand the city side, that makes all the sense in the world to me. Uh, but I see that as another barrier that makes it harder for that individual to even want to invest in that building, because otherwise it's a, it's a lower dollar building, you know, the bigger investors aren't going to do it, they're not going to touch it, there's not enough money in it. So what happens, that building is just going to get demolished or torn down and that's going to be more costly, so we, we can chat a little bit, because I just want to kind of pick your brain about that afterwards, but I, I do apologize, we do have a, a light from Councilwoman Larch, Brinkowski.
Yes, um, because the door was opened and talking about some things outside of it with the inspections and that, um, we run into the problems with people working after hours when the building inspectors are off the clock and on weekends and that makes it difficult, but I will say this, that Mr. Kuzner and Mr. Fasiana have been very, very, um, responsive because I, I, you must hear from me three, four, five, six times a day, driving through the city and a good bulk of my emails end up on the weekends, so, and I will say that they are very responsive with this. This is going to be a process in getting this, it was allowed to get to this point for so long, it is going to be a process and, um, I do think that with everybody working together, we will get there and in turning these around, um, I, you know, there are different programs, I know that when, um, Mr. Careyon was on council, they had spoken about the program in Akron about turning some of these um, buildings and these houses that could be demoed, turning them over and getting them rehabilitated. Um, I like clean and lean with the low risk offenders, um, in, in doing that with the council. Um, I like clean and lean with the low-risk offenders, um, in, in doing that with the county. And it, it's an avenue for them. Um, there are a lot of really positive things, but these end up being quality of life issues. So we hear about them constantly, and they may seem like they're not very important to us, but because it's a quality of life, it's very important to somebody. And that's why it keeps getting brought up, cause we keep hearing about it. So, but I did wanna thank the two gentlemen for their efforts and their departments. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Uh, Councilwoman Carter.
Yes, thank you. Through the chair and to David Fasiana, I just wanna say thank you, um, on 15th Street near the tracks, since the mayor brought it up. Thank you for, um, getting those, um, mattresses up. However, there is still trash there, and it continues to be a place where people are dumping. So, um, your efforts in putting, getting the mattresses out of there, if we don't do something about the trash, it's gonna be more of that dumping. So I appreciate what you've already done. And have you heard back from the railroad?
Uh, I believe Matt has been talking with them. And Andy, I know that the, uh, NS, NSX, CSX Norfolk was one of them that did reach out. Um, the other rail company has not reached back out to us. Uh, but as far as 15th, I will definitely have somebody go back out there and look and do a get and address it.
Okay. Thank you.
All righty. Thank you very much. Uh, Councilwoman.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. My problem is, you tell the people they have to get rid of, you know, couches, and they put them on the side of the house. So what happens when they do that? And do they need to be covered? And another thing, could you explain to us the steps of, like, I have an incident where they have trash on the porch. They have so many days, and then there's some other areas have 30 days. Could you explain the steps to me and the court and all that? I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure. So as far as the steps, the, the 72-hour notice really is for the, the items within the right of way. That allows that quick, quick, uh, cleanup from public properties. Anything within the property line or on the other side of that right of way line, you do, they do get a notice, the process is, they get a notice, there's a timeframe to clean it. Um, obviously, it's gonna depend on the amount of garbage that's within the area, it's gonna give them a timeframe. Typically, the inspectors don't give any more than 30 days. If those items aren't cleaned up, abated within that 30 days, then there's the court citation at that point. For the most part, I like to have my inspectors work with the residents. The last thing I wanna do is take a resident to court, which is another means of, now there's a fine that could be a burden to them. They're already having a hard time cleaning up the property, and putting a fine on it is, adds another burden. Um, but worst case scenario, they do go to court, and then at that point, it's the, the courts are, um, enforcing that. Majority of the time, by the time it gets to court, is abated by then, cause the last thing they want is the judge to order the abatement, which means that we can possibly do a clean and lean, hire a contractor, which again, can drive that cost up, and then it gets assessed to their taxes. So those are the steps for the cleanup, for the cleaning up of those problems.
Well, how long for court? You know, when they go to the court, how long does it take for the people?
That, that, I cannot answer, that's, that the courts will have to answer that. They're the ones that set the, the timing and the schedule for when it, when it's actually doing the court.
Because I'm having a very hard time with residents that call me up, and they keep calling and calling about the area, and I keep telling them about the steps, and they're just constantly, you know, calling me. Matter of fact, on Dallas Avenue, I keep emailing about that refrigerator that's on the porch. And I think I said time and time again, I lost my little playmate in the freezer from heightened seat. Now, if you're gonna put that refrigerator on, at least tell them to take their door off. They need to take their door off on Dallas, cause I would hate for my child to be playing, and that happens. And like I said, my residents are constantly, one of them told me, I don't know, I must not do my job, know my job, so please help me.
What I would tell them is, contact the building department directly. Um, and we can walk them through the steps, we can explain the process to them, and then we can go from there and act on it. At least they're getting an answer from that actual department that's, that's doing the enforcement. I would just advise them just to call our department.
You know, I, I, I understand, but I hate to keep bothering you with that, because I tell them, come to council and learn, you know, what there's to do or make a phone call, but thank you for that information.
That's fine. And to be honest, you're not bothering us, that's our job. So again, send an email, give me a call, we could address it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I, I just wanna say, I appreciate the comments on the residents. That we don't wanna be an extra burden on some of those residents who may not be able to comply right away. And you guys taking the time to work with them or try to work with them is absolutely appreciated. So thank you for that. I do have another light, uh, Councilwoman Kempson.
Yes, through the chair. This proposed ordinance is something that I'm really looking forward to seeing. Um, a building that comes to mind that would be custom made for it would be the Eagles Building, which has been the main of my existence since being on council. So I'm looking forward to, um, seeing how this, uh, how this works. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, we will go to, no more lights, we will go to the public, if anybody has a comment. Uh, yep, come, please, uh, come on right up to the mic, if you would, please. Just state your, state your name for the record, please.
Good evening. Samantha Flores here on behalf of Main Street Loraine. Um, I just wanna echo what has already been said as far as the, um, support for putting teeth back into this. Um, if there's anything we hear from our business owners on Broadway over and over again, um, it's how are we working together, um, with the city? How are we working together with existing businesses to really tackle the vacant building property, um, issue? And so just a, a couple of things that have been brought up. Um, please keep in mind, Main Street's, uh, there are pretty good models elsewhere in the state as far as cities officially working together with Main Streets to help build the capacity for either enforcement or education, uh, with regards to either legislation like this, um, or as this progresses to sort of help, um, things progress a little bit faster and a little bit farther. Um, so there was a question about identifying vacant property, that is something, um, that Main Street could help with. Uh, we already have sort of a list put together where, um, we have contact information. It's something that we're constantly trying to keep up with and do. Um, and then two, as far as making the connection between owners and, um, potential businesses that want to move in or that see value in investing in the city. Um, so we have made those connections before, and it's something that we're really, really sort of, um, digging into within the capacity that we have with our committees. Um, and then, uh, it was mentioned also the streamlining of information as far as how to go about either, um, making a complaint or sort of, um, identifying a property that needs to be prioritized. Um, we are in constant communication with our property, with our business owners, and that's something that we would be more than happy and able to do as far as streamlining that information or providing that education as well. Um, and then also, just the last thing, um, we're also here, if there's any sort of targeted, um, prioritization of cleanup areas on the Broadway corridor, um, we do have volunteer capacity. We have a pretty large board that's heavily involved in the community. Um, so if any sort of, um, specific alleyway or any sort of specific corner, um, is a targeted, then we can sort of, um, put boots on the ground and go clean up that area. Um, so again, you know, I've been in conversation with, um, Main Street Lancaster, who has a really good model as far as an official MOU, working with the city to provide any, uh, some small bit of additional capacity. So just an idea out there, but at the baseline level, thank you for your work on this.
Thank you. We appreciate that, and we certainly appreciate our Main Street. And I'm sure, uh, Mr. Kujnar or the mistress can reach out if need be to help you guys with that list. Sure, Mr. Kujnar, comment?
Oh, yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And, and thank you, Sam. Um, and just to let everyone know, um, members of the public and council, uh, we have been in, in a lot of communication with Matt Schaefer, the director of Main Street. Um, and he has shared the, their version of their, their vacant commercial property list. And we actually used that on our last Broadway street to verify all of the vacant commercial properties. Um, again, with our tools at our disposal, cross referencing the information provided by Main Street has been invaluable. So when we, uh, we are going to focus immediately on two corridors, you know, if this does pass, East 28th Street and Broadway are going to be the two biggest ones. And we'll, you know, we'll be upfront with council, with Main Street and the public, when we plan on doing that, um, to make sure that nobody's blindsided, um, and make sure that everyone knows, um, what, what we're doing.
That sounds good. Thank you, sir. Uh, just any other comments from the audience, and we'll come back. I got a lighter too. We are good. Okay. I do have a light from Councilwoman DeVall.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairperson, uh, to the, to Matt, how will people be apprised of these new changes in the, um, um, ordinance here?
So for, uh, like I mentioned before, we have, um, a, a, a list of, a list of properties that we're going to be sending notices to. Um, we're going to start with just a very simple notice to say, you know, look, this ordinance has been updated. Here are the new requirements, please register. Uh, we're going to give them a timeline in which to comply, and if they don't comply, then we're going to file notices of violation. If they don't comply with that, then we're gonna be sending them to housing court. So we're not going to jump straight to housing court based on non-compliance. We are going to give people a little bit of time to, you know, adjust, uh, based on this new legislation. But, um, we're also not gonna wait, you know, we're not going to wait a year to send them to housing court either. We're going to be, going to set reasonable expectations, so, so that they can comply with them.
Perfect. Thank you very much. I do believe our auditor has commented one.
I do, I do, Mr. Chairwoman, I do. I've got a comment, because in over all the years that I've been in government, one most frustrating thing for the city is the condition of the city and the things people get away with. And while we sit and know how poor it is, but God damn it, the only way to get this done, either with sometimes you put it in jail and get it back. I mean, honestly, it's, it's, we've done this time and time ago. Jody Moon has been talking to me about her world, and, and it's frustrating. No other city puts up with this. You don't drive around, you don't see junk or everything, but yet we have tried, I tried playing the sailor. We've tried to get that done 25 years ago. Everybody was opposed, how can you do this? And I understand when you sit there and say, well, we respect that, we, uh, work with them and work with them, but there's a time where it's less than old. And it's time to put your foot down and be, you know, be tough. I feel sorry for people who maybe can't pay their house or their lease. Now, there I have a warm heart for, but don't tell me you can throw your refrigerator, you can throw your junk out in the front yard, or do whatever you wanna do, and the city's gonna come and pick it up for you. That's not right. And this legislation should be passed, and we oughta be tougher. I am sorry, I just said, shut up with it. And I don't wanna hear anymore, holding people's hands, and, cause it's not right. They, they have personal responsibility, and it's about damn time they get it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I do have one more light, Councilwoman Thornsberry.
Yes, sir. Sir, no more lights, I will make a motion to send this item to committee. So I will give it to our president.
Thank you, sir. We do have a comment from, uh, Council President, please.
Yes, uh, following that, uh, very passionate speech from our former mayor, uh, Mr. Fasiana mentioned about the county helping out, that's how community service. And this is another thing that we had talked about for years here about, and when we started this housing court, why can't we get some of the people in lieu of a fine or whatever to come out and do community service? Well, the voters of Loraine, just to let you know, we got a new judge opening for next year municipal court. There's three candidates. I would encourage you to talk to those candidates and ask them if they would have possibly a plan of employing the people for community service. This Mr. Desert says, oh, you know, they said that for years, we can't have people do that. That's, that's below their dignity, or, you know, that's not right. Come on, folks. You know, if you can't pay the fine, you don't wanna do the time, do some service. We, we could work it out. You know, we're very forgiving people. Secondly, with the trash, I would have to say, we've done quite a bit ever since this first ordinance came out in 2021. And I'd like to applaud council members for advocating for this. We hear people come here at council, they're telling you how terrible our city is, et cetera. It isn't. We've really made some big strides. Under this administration, the demolition, the changes, the development, we make some good things. We're not perfect. It's, you know, we're working, it's tough. But as Mr. Fasiana said, be patient, please, but also be persistent. We can help ourselves. Like I said, I'm out there myself picking up Loraine. You should do your neighborhood, your yard. Mr. Carion here with Friends of Loraine, they started that community service just in South Loraine. It makes a difference. And it gets contagious, just like being throwing litter is contagious, picking it up is also contagious. So I think we're all working together. We have a lot of good ideas. We have good department heads there who are definitely holding our employees accountable. The administration has good people in place, and just a matter of working together. So I think, uh, we're making good strides. And like I said, I know next year, we got a few new council people coming on. So I hope they have their enthusiasm and new ideas also to share with us and to, once again, move Loraine forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we do have a few lights, actually, that came on. And just real quick to our presenters, I, I apologize, we did have to jump past you, but we will get to our presenters just as soon as we can here. I think the first light that came on was Councilwoman Lawrence Spinkowski.
I was going to second Mr. Thornsberry's motion to send it to council for approval.
Thank you. One more, just check the other lights real quick. Uh, Councilwoman DeVall.
I was gonna check.
Same thing. Okay. Ms., Ms. Emily? Comment or?
Yes, I do.
There we go. Okay.
Thank you, um, Chairman Nutt. Um, with regard to Mr. Aragón's, um, remarks, uh, I believe at one point, and actually several times, I posed this question about people working on fines, and it was discussed at length. And I believe there's a problem with liability and that type of thing. Now, unless somebody can figure out how to get past that. Um, and since the mayor, um, spoke up, and this is a little off topic, I would also like to thank, um, Matt Stead for doing a cleanup over in the Fifth Board, um, last weekend, and Marshall's, I believe it's Marshall's Lawn Care, who took that area off Colorado and Fillmore and cleaned that up without anyone asking to my knowledge. Um, so anyhow, I thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Kujnar, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just had one final comment. Um, and I very much appreciate the kind words from council for, for myself, for Mr. Fasiana and for the department. But this work also isn't done in a silo, right? These, a lot of these changes were brought forward by Main Street Loraine. They were brought forward by, um, through the Safety Service Director's office, as well as the mayor's office, um, as well as, as through our office. Um, we looked at many different city ordinances, uh, to make sure that we were putting something forward, um, that we believe is the best solution for this problem, right? So again, uh, I very much appreciate it, um, and, and thank you for that. But this, this work is, was, was definitely a collaboration with, with all, all, all the partners at the table, and, and all of us are going to work to make sure that this is forced the right way. So very excited for council to pass it and, and to get to work.
Thank you, sir. I do believe the mayor had a comment?
I suppose.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor.
I just wanted to say that our judges are providing the workers for Loraine County Public Health. So it's our people that owe fines that are in fact, uh, helping Loraine County Public Health clean up. And we've been working with a, a group of people to look at fees and fines regarding people in court that might not be able to afford to pay a fee or a fine, and have that alternative to do some work and clean up our city. And we asked Loraine County Public Health to concentrate on, uh, Broadway, along with other properties that Dave Fasiano or Matt might point out to them. So they're gonna concentrate on keeping Broadway, uh, clean this summer. And so that's kind of a nice service that we're getting from Loraine County Public Health, and our judges are helping with supplying the labor.
Thank you for that information, sir. Appreciate it. Ms. Emily.
Through the chair. Um, so Loraine County Public Health is covering the liability as far as it's, it's our actors, but they're responsible.
Right. They're taking, yeah. They're, they're taking responsibility for the people that are working off their fines or the fee.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Thornsberry, if you are ready, sir. Will you make the motion, please?
Yes, sir. At this time, I would, uh, make a motion to send this item to councils with consideration.
Thank you. First light is on. Mr. Spring-Goski.
And I would second that motion.
Thank you. We'll do a voice vote. That'd be yays.
Aye.
Ayes.
Aye.
Minays. Okay. Thank you very much. Motion moves forward to Kerry's. And we will go to our presenters for item A and B, and we will just take a few minutes. Sorry. All right. Thank you, everybody. We are going to get going, moving along here with the presentation. We certainly appreciate being patient with us. Thank you for that. I had a good conversation to get through there, but when you are ready, sir, if you would. You have, yes. Thank you. Come on.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for the opportunity to come in and tell you a little bit about our organic facility that, that we're in the process of permitting out in Baumhart Road. So the company's called Racklin Sands. It's, we're taking a range of organic waste streams, food waste, manure, and the like, and mix it with, grind up green waste and, and green waste collected from the likes of tire shops. So maybe dropped off by one of the big waste companies. And we take that product in and we mix it into what we call windrows. So it's a very specific recipe that goes under a window of this material that gets put together because it's got to be able to breathe. For a window, it gets too tight and it doesn't breathe, it'll start to stink. So, so the mixing of the windows is where they go, but also the turning of the windows. So this is what's called a composter. And that straddles the windows. And about every 15 days, it'll go down those windows and turn them and aerate, it aerates the windows, which allows the temperatures in the windows to come back up. When you're composting, you have to meet a temperature of 131 degrees for a minimum of 72 hours. And that's one of the regular ways of ensuring that you kill any pathogens in there. And so there's no diseases or anything that comes from compost, as you might imagine, food waste and manures and the likes. Put together, you have to be careful. You don't want to attract vectors, rats, birds and the like. So we'll use a methodology called the Harvest Quest methodology. It's a company I used to work for. There's just a variety of testimonials from Harvest Quest users. When you use this Harvest Quest methodology, when you make compost, you put those windows together, you inoculate it with microbes, then you essentially leave it. This is a process approved by the EPA. You leave it for 30 days, whereas most composters will turn their pile four or five times in that initial period. So not turning your compost pile four or five times in the initial period really maintains, keeps the odors down. And that's very important, obviously, where we are, out in Baumhart Road. We're not in the middle of the countryside. And, and the siding, a compost site is hard. But one of the first things you look for at a compost site, one of the biggest issues in composting is the surface. If you're on an earthy surface and you're running big equipment on it and the water from the compost pile gets into the ground and you tear it up with loaders, et cetera, et cetera, it's really one of the biggest causes of odors in a compost set. The reason we bought the property on Baumhart Road, probably four years ago now, is because it was really mostly a paved site with good, with good drainage. So that makes it an ideal spot for a compost set. If you can manage the water in a compost set, you've really beaten 90% of the problems. So it's an 18 acre site and it's well paved and drained. We use the Harvest Quest methodology. And we've done a lot of engineering work going into our water collection and the settling pond on site in the very right hand side of that draw. Now, you'll see a settling pond. The, the area with the, the parallel lines, that's, that's the, what we call the active compost area. So when product comes in and gets mixed together, it goes into that area. And that, and all the drainage from that area is being rerouted to that settling pond. So one of the things right here is always wanting to know what a compost set is. We want to make sure that any water that hits your compost pile doesn't leave the site. And so that's what that settling pond is all about. It rewires the water from that active area to that settling pond. That's a three-phase settling pond. The first phase is a concrete bunker where we can scrape out fines as they settle. And then it goes into a larger pond where the water gets oxygenated, et cetera, so as it doesn't develop any odors as well. So the rest of the site is just material handling. And then the building, I think we have something in here. But there's this type of products we'll, we'll make. You know, when you make compost, you can sell it as straight compost, or you can take it, you can mix it with peat, bark, pearl, like this type of things that you might see in a store with your potting soil. And that's really the sort of high value market. So we'll take our compost, we'll put it into a building, we'll put it into the blending system that is made by a company called Agronomics, or Lorraine County outfit. And, and it'll come out as a blending, the blending system that can, it's fully automated, so you could make whatever blend you like. There, there'll be four hoppers and ours for bark, compost, sand, and, and peat and the like. And then there's what we call little chemical hoppers where if some customer wanted a specific blend, we could blend that in. Those are the type of products we'll, we'll make and put in bags like that. That, at the bottom there is a bagging system. It's what they call a fully automated bagging line with robotic palletizing and all that sort of stuff. And it, that's going to be a big challenge for us. It's a big technical challenge. So we're good composters and all that. But I haven't run a bagging line before, so that's going to be a challenge for us kicking it off. And we hope to, we hope to bag for the likes of maybe pettities, people like that. Ohio has the largest population of independent garden centers in the country, so there's an interesting stat for you. And we hope to go to those smaller garden centers and say, you know, we'll put it in your bag, O D C Garden Center. You can make it under your own brand, et cetera, et cetera. So a lot of private labeling, that's what this bagging line is all about, trying to get into all the corners of the market. And this really, we put this in at the end. This is our permit from the Ohio EPA on the groundwater side. And Kate can tell you that when you start a compost facility, with a groundwater frame, it's, it's pretty much everything. Obviously, getting in front of council and getting local support matters. But, but if you can't manage your water properly on a compost set, and to the regulations, then they've got problems. And it's a big investment in our surface and in our settling pond and on the site to ensure that we meet all these standards. But I've worked with many compost sites down the years, and I have the same fear that a lot of people here would have, and that is that it doesn't stink. So with a compost, I've been on plenty of the two. And so we have a lot of experience and we'll be very attentive to the odors on site. We know that's an issue in, in council and Thorningsberry's ward that, you know, we understand the residents. And by the way, our, our, our business is next door to us. We've got Heidenberg distributing next door to us. So some things we do can generate dust. You know, so where we grind our green waste down the other end of the site and things like that. When you turn the compost, when you, you don't have to turn it at 10 a.m. in the morning if you want to turn it once a month, right? So after 30 days, there won't be odors, but you don't have to turn it at a time when there's anybody around. So there are a lot of little bits and pieces in running a compost set in terms of managing these threats. But odors and water runoff are the two big ones. And, you know, we're very attentive to that. The, the investment that's going into the, the pad and the, the settling pond is the same. It costs the same as to build the building. You know, it's like, as you know, that we're investing heavily into the, into making this a proper compost set. They're not a polite, they're not a nice place to work if they're not, if they're not run properly here. And I've had that issue with employees in the past. And so we have a lot of experience, but we also know a lot of challenges. So we're going to start the site slowly. One of the biggest mistakes a composter can make, because you take gate fees, right? The green waste and the food waste and the manure that comes in. You could pay for that. And that's an important part of the model. The biggest mistake composters make across the country is when they get their permit, where they get super hungry for the gate fees. And they get inundated with material right away. And you can really put so much in a window every day. It's very much a cycle composting. You can't deal with massive surges. So, you know, that's our commitment to, to, to the community is when we're attentive to, to odors. We are near the lake, right? So I'm personally very attentive to water quality and not ensuring that Kate can explain even more, but you know, you don't want particulate matter. Fine stuff washing in the waterways because it, it has a high biological oxygen demand. And that's what deoxygenates water. And so we will have filters in every drain on the site to ensure we keep that particulate matter down going into our settling pond. So we're going to a lot of lengths to ensure that we're a good corporate citizen. We don't want to be out there upsetting our neighbors any more than you want us to be. So I'm happy to take questions from everybody. This is undoubtedly going to be a challenge for us, but I do appreciate the time that the council and Thorningsberry has given me. You know, we, we didn't get off to the greatest start, starts. But we've had some time to, to pull together and explain what it is we're going to do. And, and I know because there's a letter in the file. When I came in front of the building, I was in the planning commission. There was a letter in the file that says, I don't know what it says, but it basically says, if you stink it up, you're in trouble. So that's probably not the technical, the correct language, but we're attentive to all of that. And my family and I are very heavily invested in this. So, you know, we, we really can't run the risk of screwing it up. But, you know, I'm also respectful of the concerns of, of either the constituents or the council members. And I'm happy to feed any questions.
Thank you, sir. I was going to ask you some questions, but I'm sure council members will ask the similar questions. So we will start with Councilman Thorningsberry.
Yes, thank you. I think she speaks the truth. I don't know where I can start, but probably 18, I would say 18 months now. The relationship, you know, is so long away. I remember when Councilman Fasiana and I went out there, it was like the bed of winter, about 18 months ago. And that's where we started this process. And I, I feel a lot more comfortable with the project than I did originally. The biggest thing, and this is more for, for Kate than Shane, you know, I still, I still want to be able to, even though I, I said I forgot to know Shane, and I feel like he's going to do this thing and he's going to do it right. But I still want to be able to, you know, tell my residents that the city is still protected if things go bad. So whenever we get a chance to get to Kate, if she can explain that process, I think that could help alleviate concerns that my fellow council people would have as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. We, we do have a few lights. Is, would council be okay with going to Ms. Golden first? I believe the enforcement inspection, EPA concerns water runoff, all that. If you would, please. Oh, oh, eh, to select your mic. Thank you.
Good evening.
Yeah, we have some feedback, sorry.
No, that's okay. Um, Kate Golden, City of Lorraine Engineering Department. I am happy to speak to this. So in 2017, the city adopted chapter 1547 of codified ordinances, and it is a composting standard, right? And, you know, the standard was put in place because we anticipated that at some point in the future, there would be a desire for folks to locate composting facilities in this community. We were already seeing a growth in composting operations on Baumhart, and we needed to put some standards in place that would help us protect ourselves, right? So effectively, what the standard does and did is it sets some basic standards for what is allowable in the city and what is not allowable. You know, if you would like to have a composting operation in your backyard as a resident, you are allowed to do that. When I say composting operation, it means a compost pile, right? In your backyard, you, you are legally allowed to do that. And in, in, from many aspects of this standard, you are effectively exempt, right? But what it also does is it requires that folks who are interested in operating a commercial compost facility have appropriate licensure from the state in order to operate within the city boundaries. And that is a requirement. So without the licensure from the state for the appropriate, the appropriate licensure for the class of compost facility that they are intending to operate, they cannot operate within the city. So what that has done is that puts the onus of responsibility for enforcement on the state. And the licensure that the state issues and that the state operates and requires enforcement of and for. We are not compost professionals. You know, we do not operate licensure for specific to compost facilities. That's a requirement of the state and the Department of Health, and we believe that that is where it should stay, right? So that is what this ordinance does. What it also does is it, it develops some general standards for composting. It includes nuisance standards, RET and vector control, surface water protections, protection standards, mixing standards. And then it does put in place some sewage restrictions, which effectively means you can't mix sludge of any sort, municipal, commercial, industrial wastes into your, your process. And then it also includes things like prohibitions and abatement processes. So how are we going to deal with these issues, deal with issues if they come about, right? Ultimately, there are civil, if there are civil ways that we handle that, and there are criminal ways that we handle it. But I, you know, I think the moral of the story is that the standards are set up in a way that allow the city to kind of take progressive enforcement, but that also effectively preclude operation if something were to go wrong with that permit. So if the permit is pulled by the state, then they can no longer operate within the city boundaries. Period.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will go to the lights for some questions. Councilwoman Larson-Goski.
Yes. When this first came about, Mr. Donley was well aware of my feelings on it. My concerns were the runoff because of all the little wetlands back there and the creeks behind. I was very familiar with the Ford land that, as it used to be in the Fairlane yard. But he's since then been able to show me that all of that would be contained, that there won't be an issue. So then I do have a question. How many employees will you have?
You know, I think we said initially, we probably have 12 employees. A group called Rust Belt Riders will co-locate on the site with us right away. That'll be five people. But I anticipate within a year it'll be 12 people with that bagging line and blending line. And that's really supposed to be the first phase of the project. There's supposed to be a phase that comes after this, but we need to succeed the first phase.
Right. No, and I understand that. So I wanted to thank you for investing in Lorraine. And, you know, given that proliferation of small garden centers, I mean, you've got them right across the street on the other side of Baumhart. I think that this will be an interesting enterprise. And, I mean, going green is a great thing. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for those comments. I don't see any other. Councilman Large DeVall.
Yes. What are the requirements or what credentials do the people who run, actually run the facility have to have?
We, we, we'll have a master composter on site. So from the composting side of things, a master composter is somebody who has reached a qualification with the U.S. Compost Council. I'm not quite sure what are all the requirements that are. Beyond that, we'll need some technical people to run the bagging and blending line. And that used to be sort of a laborer's role. But it's not anymore. These are fully automated lines that require some engineering capabilities. But on site, we'll need some machine operators, and that's something that we hope to go to the J V S and places like that over the next few years. So, no, that's honestly a consideration for us as we grow, is will we be able to get the people? We need, but we have been in the county a long time too. It might not sound like it, but I have. And, and in Avon, I had a business there and worked with the J V S and the college. And places like that, I'm always finding to be good places to work with. And J V S in particular was very good at helping us find employees, training welders and the like. So really a smattering, you know, from myself and Jim up there to the Rust Belt Riders, but there'd definitely be some engineers in there. And some technical roles.
Do you plan on having, and this is the first time I've ever interacted with possibility of a composter. All I know is put your potato peels in your yard.
Yes.
But do you have, do you plan to have an odor response team? My understanding is that there are some people that have a complaint line. If, if citizens do begin to detect that, they, they have a complaint line. They have someone that will investigate. They'll have a 24-hour calling thing. How, what are your plans for that?
Well, I'll be the person responsible and responsive. You know, I would imagine some, if there was a complaint, it might come through the council and Thorningsberry. But, you know, we're not IBM. We're not a big IBM, we're not a big company, and I'm really the person out in front, I suppose. So as far as, you know, managing an odor complaint, I think for the foreseeable future, that would be, that would be me. You know, we'll be onsite mixing product every day. You know, we would be the first people to know if there was an odor coming. I don't think we'd be able to remediate it there. But should there be a complaint, I would imagine that I would be the person out here.
You said, another thing that I understood is that there are waste characterizations that result in different types of reactions. For example, you said you're going to process food?
Yes, food waste. It could be food waste or horse manure. It could be.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, food waste, yes.
When you say food waste, are you talking about horse manure?
No, food waste would be, Rust Belt Riders collect about five thousand tons of food waste in receptacles in the city of Cleveland and on out into western Cuyahoga County.
This will include like a restaurant you might collect?
It could be, yes.
How, is there any issue then with pests and like raccoons or flies or anything?
Yes. There are. The first phase of our composting, we'll do it under a roof, we'll mix the product, put it in under a roof, and we'll put it on the air, as we call it, to keep the temperature up. That helps in the sense that not rain will kill it in the first phase, but it also keeps it manageable so as we don't have what we call vectors, which could be a rat, a bird. Often, oftentimes, in compost piles, it can be flies. We use a methodology that heats up the pile in a different way, so that the outside of our compost pile gets hot first, which which helps keep the larvae down. But very, very sensitive to vectors, and that generally means rats. I've been on some pretty horrible compost sites where they were out in the door of the machine, you know, and rats were over your shoulder sort of thing. So not that I want to scare you about compost sites, but but the first phase is important to us because by the time we put it out into our windows, you wouldn't find an apple or an orange.
Okay.
And if we put those out there right away, it would be very hard to stop an apple or an orange rolling out of the pile. And you really have to be on it because, you know, what you don't want with vectors is them finding a food source.
Right.
Because they'll come back.
Yeah.
And so, but in the compost business, people employ a lot of different methods for vectors, including hawks, cats, and the like.
Okay. One other question. Right now, you're operating under the EPA regulations that are current, right? And we know that there are some people that are trying to do away with any sort of EPA regulations. Will your company maintain a high level as described by the state or whatever, no matter what happens nationally?
Yes. I think from our perspective, it's important to go through the regulators to be given our permit. But we're ultimately very self-regulating in the sense that, you know, obviously, we're there on site. The compost sites out in the past, we maintained a very high standard as it related to odors. And truthfully, it wasn't as much about the employees, it was about neighbors, et cetera. So, you know, I don't know that our compass, compass is driven by the regulator so much as it is. We've been in the compost industry a long time, and we have some pride in what we do. And so I hope that answers your question. It's hard, it's hard to prove these things standing here, you know, but over time, I believe you'll see us as somebody who the EPA or the Health Department aren't coming and visiting us to, you know, having field complaints and everything. So.
My last, this is my last question. One of the reasons for failure of compost facilities is the lack of a market. I've heard you identify some possibilities. Are you pretty sure? Because the last thing we need in Lorraine is for a big operation to develop, and then they're gone.
They're gone, yeah.
Okay. You're pretty sure, you're pretty confident about your your market that you're going to be serving?
Well, you make a good point, that for your first point, that traditionally, one of the issues for compost facilities was selling compost. And they were so gate-driven, you know, so driven by the gate fee that that the compost wasn't necessarily worth much. They treated it as it wasn't worth much. But that has changed pretty dramatically over the last fifteen or twenty years since I got into the compost business. This is not going to be a massive site. I ran some businesses in Florida, compost businesses, that might be twenty times the size of this site. And those created huge logistical challenges, to the point where I wanted out. And I wanted to do the smaller version, the more refined version. And we sold a lot of those products, too, in Florida that you saw in bags. So I'm reasonably confident, well, as I tell to me and the guys that are coming on board. You know, I believe we're going to be able to do it, but I'm not really confident. We're going to have to get out and work with all the garden centers, et cetera. But I would revert to the point that this is not a massive volume operation. And so the risk of, you know, of us falling the site for stuff and locking the gates and leaving is is minimal or zero, because we're restricted by the EPA on how much we can take in in a given year. So that's, I think it's eighty-six thousand cubic yards. It's a gross volume there. So, yes, we've done it before, but it's going to be a lot of challenges for us kicking this off. But in general, we believe the compost market to be underserved is is the truth. The basic thing for the for compost around the country is people understanding that it's there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brett.
Thank you very much. Another light, Councilwoman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Net. From a person who spends a lot of time digging in the dirt in my backyard and flowers, vegetables, whatever, I might be your market. My husband's been going to the garden centers every day for last week, picking up, I need this, I need that. So I think there's a market here. And I think especially with the economy and as people start to understand how you need to affect, I guess, and affect its farming, what needs, you can't just bag a dirt somewhere and expect things to grow. You have to mix and become pretty good. I do my own little compost thing, which it does smell. I think it's a growing business, and I think you'll do well here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Moon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a, in my ward, I have a garden, and she's our first black farmer certified. She takes branches and she burns them, and then she puts water over them to make the.
Bauchard?
Yeah. Yeah, that's it. It's amazing. And they donate ferns to her. And I've gone over and watched her do this. I'm like, girl, you can't be doing that fire over here. She goes, no, I'm gonna, it's gonna go down, and then it'll turn to something. You have to come visit her garden. She's amazing.
Where is she?
She's on Cliff's Hill doing my ward. I'll give you my card, but I would love for you to meet her. But she's amazing what she do with, you know, making, what is it called again?
Bauchard?
Yes.
Bauchard.
Yes, thank you.
And we hope to make that at some point. It's, an industrial scale is very expensive, a lot of capital. So that's would be at the next phase. But that's another one of those elements that is becoming very popular. And we'd love to have her at the compost set.
Okay, I'll give her your information. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you very much. See any other lights? We'll go to the audience. If anybody has a comment or a question? I don't believe so. This looks good. We'll come back. Anything from the administration? That'd been good. Thank you, sir. Two, it looks like Mr. Thornbury.
Yes. Before making this motion again, I'll just say, in my eighteen months working with Shane, I think he's got a wonderful attitude, community-based attitude. I talked to him about a neighbor on Baumhart Road, and he's like, yeah, I think we might be able to help them improve their site. Just a couple of weeks ago, one of the HOAs was looking at possibly for our locations, taking drains material from one of their ponds. And it's like, yeah, we'll see what it looks like. So he seems to be very willing to, you know, work with other entities in the community, whether it's coming out and teaching or learning about composting. Seems like he's got a great community attitude and spirit. So that makes me feel even even better about this project. So I will make a motion to send this item to council for consideration.
This was, there isn't actually an ordinance attached. This is for informational purposes. So I think we're all good on that, though, sir. And if you think comes before council, then fantastic. Mr. Stojcowski, will you comment or seconding?
I was, I was going to second that if there was an ordinance in place in that. But I would strongly encourage everybody on council to support this. This is a unique, and, you know, it's like on one end of the city, we've got this composting site, and on the other end of the city, we've got the go-kart tracks. And so we're getting some very unique players coming to Lorraine to do business. And I think it's very intriguing. So, but God bless you. And I wanted to note also that at the time, the Lorraine County, or the Lorraine City Port Authority Director, Tom Brown, it was at the time, spoke very highly about this process because there was a process that, there was a presentation in front of the county commissioners. And at that time, he informed me of it, and he spoke very, very highly of the entire process. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you for those comments. Well, so we certainly appreciate it. It was a great presentation. Wish you the best of luck. Thank you for investing in the city of Lorraine. And thank you, Ms. Golden, for being here for it. I think we are, unless you have anything that you want to add last minute, we're good. Thank you, sir. No, we appreciate your time and thank you for being patient with us. Thank you. Well, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.